There we are.
You're hired.
Well, well done. Thank you. All right. Good evening. I'd like to call to order the February twentieth, two thousand and twenty-five meeting of the City of Nashua Planning Board. Adam Secretary, can you have a roll call, please?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Mayor Dauntis, Mike Peterson, Bob Ballinger.
Here.
Adam Varley.
Here.
Maggie Harper, here. Dan Hudson, Scott Leclair.
Here.
Larry Hirsch, Cameron Green.
Here.
Alderman Klee.
Here.
Thank you. We have a quorum. Next item on the agenda, approval of minutes from February sixth, two thousand and twenty-five. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review the minutes and is willing to make a motion regarding their acceptance?
I'll make the motion.
Alderman Klee. All right. Motion by Alderman Klee. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Varley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Abstention?
Aye. Abstention.
So we have three, three in favor and three abstentions. All right. Thank you. All right. Next item on the agenda, communications. Scott or Sam, any additional materials received outside of original notice or packets?
The past twenty-four hours, but the staff report was updated to include a engineering letter, a waiver, a letter, and a comment.
And that's the one that was posted, I think it was yesterday or?
Yes.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right. Next item on the agenda, report of chair, committee, and liaison. Ms. Harper, do you have anything to say, please?
Only that there's an upcoming historical commission meeting next Monday. The last meeting was canceled due to lack of quorum.
All right. Good. Thank you. All right. Moving on to our regular cases. Before doing so, I would like to read the planning board procedure. The procedure of the meeting is as follows. After the legal notice of each conditional special use permit, site plan, or subdivision plan is read by the chair, the board will determine if that application is complete and ready for the board to take jurisdiction. The public hearing will begin, at which time the applicant representative will be given time to present an overview and description of the project. The applicant shall speak to whether or not they agree with recommended staff stipulations. The board will then have an opportunity to ask questions of the applicant or staff. The chair will then ask for testimony from the audience, for anyone wishing to speak in opposition or with concern to the plan may speak. Please come forward to the microphone, state your name and address for the record. This will be the time to ask questions they may have regarding this thing. Next, public testimony will come from anyone wishing to speak in favor of the plan. The applicant will then be allowed a rebuttal period, at which time they shall speak to any issues or concerns raised by the prior public testimony. After this is completed, the public hearing will end, and the board will resume the public meeting, at which time the board will deliberate and vote on the application before us. The board asks that both sides keep their remarks and subject at hand, and try not to repeat what has already been said. Above all, the board wants to be fair, everyone to make the best possible decision based on the testimony presented and all applicable approval criteria established in the Nashua revised ordinances. Thank you for your interest and courteous attention, and at this time I would kindly request that you turn off or mute your cell phones. All right. Under old business site plans, we have none. Under new business site plans, first item is case eight twenty-four dash zero two three eight, property located at one fifty-two Temple Street. Has any member of the board an opportunity to review this application and is willing to make a motion for the board to take jurisdiction? Mr. Varley?
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion that the application is complete and ready for the board to accept jurisdiction.
Motion by Mr. Varley. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Please, sir, come right up to the microphone, just state your name and address for the record.
Michael Malowski with Allen and Major Associates. We are the civil engineers and surveyors, landscape architects for a project proposed at one fifty-two Temple Street.
Certainly. Do you like to give us an overview of the plan? Certainly, proceed with your full application. I know this is familiar to some folks, but if you want to provide any, any updates on the current since the last time, there are some new members of the board, so if you care to fill in anything, we absolutely appreciate it.
We can definitely do that. Some of you may be familiar, this is a property located at one fifty-two Temple Street. We have access along Temple and Bridge Street, and the property is situated adjacent to the old railroad. The property has been historically an industrial use. There was a contractor that was using the site as a laydown area. It's been a former home of parts of the railroad, and it is being paved and relatively flat. We are proposing two buildings consisting of eighty-four units apiece. The first building that is situated along Temple Street has amenity space on the first floor. Based on the architectural plans, they have an elevated ceiling height on that first floor, which will allow for that space to be converted to commercial or retail if down the road is needed necessary. The second building has parking on the first floor and four stories of residential units above. There's a mix of one and two bedroom units that are situated there. We have approximately two hundred and fifty-two parking spaces, which is adequate for the number of units, as the sale has up on the screen. Now, we have an extensive landscape plan. We are proposing new utilities to be brought into the site, sewer and water, all of which will originate within Temple Street. We had had numerous discussions with Penachuk Water relative to water installation, as well as Joe Mandola from the city regarding sewer infrastructure drainage for the property. As the property is being paved, we do have a closed drainage system on the property with infiltration being shown. We will need to, at some point, amend our P O T permit for the property. We did receive approval from N H D E S for the site. It has not changed in character since that approval, so it's a matter of resubmitting and refiling. We don't foresee an issue with those concerns. There was a traffic analysis that had been prepared, that had been reviewed by Wayne Husband. He has provided an updated impact fee relative to that to be contributed prior to certificate of occupancy. We approve that. We do not have any objections to that. We did also receive some comments late yesterday from Joe Mandola's office relative to some engineering comments. I have gone through those comments. There's nothing substantial that would change the design of the intent of the project. He is looking for some additional clarification notes to be added to the plan, so materially the plans will not change. There are architectural plans that were provided that meet the city's master plan relative to material selection and massing of the building. Not sure if this is up, but those have not changed from the previous supplemental. So the first floor is, is shown, sort of provides amenity space for the one hundred and eighty-four units. There'll be a leasing office that is on the backside of the elevated units there. We are providing a full fourteen feet clear in that passageway under the building. So fire apparatus, and we do have some utilities that run through there, so should they need to be replaced at some point, it could be accomplished. We are also making provisions for if a future cafe or such, we do have grease traps shown as part of the sewer collection system. We don't anticipate using them right off, but we do have provisions for them there. And there are entrances to the front of the building that directly connect out to Temple Street. As part of the project, we do have new sidewalks that are being proposed along the full length of Temple Street with two curb cuts and nice wide sidewalks for pedestrian access along Temple Street.
Pardon the interruption.
That's okay.
We're working through some technical difficulties.
I know.
We just see, we can hear you loud and clear.
Okay.
I think it's just a matter of video views.
He's getting some feedback.
All right. I think that's a general overview of the project. Happy to answer any questions that the board may have? Just a couple of quick ones for me to start off my day. Just in terms of, I guess, sort of big picture, unit counts, driveway access is effectively what was proposed previously. Has there been any substantive change to?
There, there has not been any substantive change to the, the locations of the curb cuts. We are providing two main curb cuts on Temple Street and a third out to Bridge. So all of those have been reviewed initially and included as part of the initial traffic study, and those had been reviewed by Wayne Husband. We didn't have any additional comments to those locations.
The unit count is the same?
The unit count is the same. Yep.
I believe you touched on it. You were accountable to the impact fee that was developed by Traffic Department.
Yes. Yeah, that was, there was, the, the, there was a slight change in the amount assessed to the different trips between the first time we had received approval and now, but the methodology is the same.
I think that's that, that conversation, one, one thing I did want to ask you, you are seeking one waiver request. Would you care to touch upon that?
So the one waiver request we are requesting is to not show the full extent of the existing conditions on the abutting properties. We do show enough just outside the property bounds to sort of capture the improvements to the property, but we do not extend it out past a hundred feet.
Understood. And just so you know, that's a fairly common waiver request, and you just want something on the record addressing that, that you weren't back requesting it.
Okay.
That's, that's all I have. I'll open up to the board. Alderman Klee, please.
Thank you. I, I will admit I'm new to this, so I apologize if I ask questions that have already been touched upon and unacted, but in looking at the comments that were submitted, and maybe they were submitted already in the, in the past, but the staff report, when I looked at, like, comment, I want to bring it up here, so I apologize, comment number ten. Comment, Temple Street West entrance is skewed. This possesses the following problems: Right turn in encourages entering at a higher speed, left turn in awkward turn, particularly after negotiating the roundabout, right turn out awkward turn, more difficult to see oncoming traffic from right, left turn out more difficult to see oncoming traffic from right. That concerns me. Later on, it talks about a potential of a, where there's a Temple Street and a, a Bridge Street that this could encouraging cut-throughs and so on.
Yep.
And where all of this is located, knowing the traffic that is in that area, seeing things like this happening, and I, I know there's a lot of traffic in that area.
Correct.
And, and things get backed up and so on. And knowing that you have these beautiful sidewalks, meaning you have a lot of pedestrians.
Yes.
And a lot of this, I do see safety concerns. I see, and when I'm seeing all of this and knowing that there's a railroad crossings that are there, and I just, suddenly I get these, like, little pangs.
No, agreed. The, the connections on the backside of the property have always been there. The, there will be an onsite property manager that will be there, that will be able to mitigate and watch for people coming through. It's primarily residential, and there's parking stalls on either side of that main access road, so the likelihood that you're going to get, you may occasionally get somebody buzzing through, but where there is the potential of interactions with residents in that area, the likelihood that they're going to do what all they want, because there is, there could be traffic of residents coming and going in those areas. There will also be an onsite property manager that can monitor that. The skewed entrance on Temple Street, I, that was a new one to us. We're going to have to review that a bit more. Initially, we had it perpendicular, and at some point along the design and staff review, it actually got skewed to that location. So we were going to, I, I need to touch base with Joe on that one. We do have the ability to put it back to perpendicular. It was at one point, but the plans that had been approved previously have it in that same skewed location. And I think it was more for, to try to force folks down to Temple Street and out to that signalized intersection closest to, and not have them go through the rotary and up in the back and up to Bridge Street. I believe that's why that got skewed, but I can, we can definitely go back and review that if that is a concern of the city. We do have the ability to push that back and make it perpendicular. We do provide a site distance plan in the package that shows that we do have adequate visibility into the rotary, past the rotary, and up on Temple Street. We have provided that for all three intersections that's requested by the city, so we do have adequate site distance at those locations. The railroad crossing on Bridge Street, that's always existed, and they do have, there is new markers, paint markers there that we need to update our plans, so there is better preemptive sort of measures in that area than what were previously. I believe that the paint markings were done by the city for railroad in that area.
And just one more? Oh, thank you. There, there's, and I was just trying to quickly glance and see if I could see them offhand, but there, there's some kind of discussions about some of the, I think, handicap type of ramps and so on going into the right of way. Do, do you recall? That's why I was just trying to see those. Are those any kind of an issue?
A couple of comments that we had relative to the eighty-eight.
There are a couple of things that go into the right of way, you know, but that one in particular.
We do have sidewalks that go out to the right of way. There are handicap ramps shown at the driveways, so we do have those allocated. The west driveway still has the truncated domes, which the city has indicated would not be required. They've actually asked us to remove those, so we'll definitely take care of that. The sidewalk is wider than normal through there, so one of the things that we will need to do is provide an easement to the city to accommodate that. So they are a bit wider along the front to help with pedestrian access.
Okay. That, that's fine. Thank you.
Okay.
Other members of the board? Ms. Harper, please.
Just a quick question, because I didn't see anything in here. Were, are there, is there a certain number of affordable units that are supposed to be provided for this project?
There are not. There are no affordable units, nor is there a requirement to, as part of this application.
Okay. Thank you.
May I ask, why are you, are you paying the fee or?
Under the, so we are in a TOD overlay district, and as part of that, the requirement for affordable units is very exempt from that requirement.
Mr. Druckey?
Yes.
That is?
So it's a, it's a little bit more nuanced than that. So in this particular district, in the G I, where you have no density maximums, you cannot earn a density bonus because for what purpose would that serve? State statute requires that inclusionary zoning ordinances be incentive-driven rather than mandatory, so we are not able to acquire affordable units when there is no density bonus to be had. So we actually cannot enforce a mandate of affordable units.
Okay. Thank you. Thank you.
Just a quick question on, on parking. I know you meet the, the standard of, you know, want to have spaces per unit.
Yep.
I just, I guess, wanted to ask the question practically otherwise. I'm assuming you view that as sufficient parking based on, you know, the, the layout of the types of units you're going to have?
Correct. And the fact that we are in the, the TOD in close proximity to future rail stations in the, the area, there is a substantial walking network of sidewalks in the area, which helped bolster that.
Yeah. Thank you.
Other members of the board? See none at this time. Thank you.
Yep.
I will open up to the public. Is anyone here to speak in opposition or with concern to this application? Please, sir, come right up to the microphone. Just state your name and address for the record, please.
Daniel Gagnon, thirty-one Bridge Street. I am a director butter to this project on Bridge Street. I own the four properties from the city park all the way to the property line of this project. One of them is, the parking lot is the one, my property, which is tax map thirty-nine, lot thirty. When my lot used to be combined with their lot now, and it was owned by Chris Eckler, one of the neighbors in the neighborhood, who subdivided this lot, sold us that property and put a twelve-foot wide access easement, which is noted on the plan, and it's supposed to remain open for access, but they blocked it off. The plan shows a lot of encroachments that I don't think should be allowed on an access easement. It's in my deed. This parking spot is going to be curbing. They're going to put, they're going to use snow storage, they're going to saw it and seed, and I have a right to access and drive over that. I have two large gates at the end of my parking lot. They open up to probably like sixteen feet each. We have used it in the past many times. We did have a problem with people cutting through the neighborhood. It is a huge issue over there. We had to have Union Street turned into a one-way because of the issue, because there were so many close calls and some pretty good accidents there. On my property at twenty-nine Bridge Street, they cut through that parking lot all the time during rush hour. I have to block it with my truck to discourage people from cutting through private property, because it is a residential lot, or it's a commercial lot, but some of the kids in the neighborhood skateboarding there, and people come flying in around the corner. Cut through on their side is going to happen. It happens in that neighborhood everywhere. But my, I have no, I'm not against the project at all. I'm against what's going to happen with that easement that I have access to. So if it's granted, the plan's granted the way this is right now, I will have to file an injunction in court if some, as soon as they do something to block that easement. They're showing removal of the asphalt, the fence, construction fence going on the north side of the easement, which completely blocks me out. They have a Jersey barrier at the end in one corner right now that's been there all summer. I've almost gone over. I own a big loader. I've almost gone over there a few times and taken it out, but I haven't. Over all the years, I've owned the property over almost fifteen years now, and I've plowed that easement every year, all winter long. So that's my concern, is just the easement, that that, those items should be corrected in this plan, and that easement should remain open, and there shouldn't be parking spots or curbing in any part of that easement. That's the only thing I have for tonight.
All right. Thank you. Questions, certainly. Alderman Klee?
I'm sorry, what was your address?
Thirty-one Bridge Street.
Thirty-one Bridge Street. Thank you.
I mean, you have a list of, you have the applicant, the architects, the engineers. They all know that easement's there. It's in there, yet they're making a plan and encroaching on it. Thank you. All right.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other questions for Mr. General? Not at this time. Thank you for your testimony.
Thank you.
Other members of the public that wish to speak in opposition or with concern? Are there any members in the public that wish to speak in favor of this application? Seeing none. And Scott, I think we did not have anyone on Zoom tonight. Is that correct?
No, no one on Zoom.
All right. In that case, Paul, you're welcome to come up and address the easement issue to the extent you're able to.
Thank you. I'm not sure that we can, that I can fully explain that, because we do have some documentation that there was a release of easements on the property. So there is recorded as of the two thousand and nineteen. I'll have to take a look and review that to see exactly what those, because that was all for the properties that Mr., it was Mr. Eckler had owned. We do have, if you can pull up the, if you zoom in on the site layout plan, I think that should still show. What we need to do is just adjust some of the curbing. Oop, oop.
Too far.
Too far. Site layout plan, thank you.
Next page right here.
Yeah, the top of that page. Can you zoom in on that top page right where the North Arrow is?
Right here?
Yeah.
Is that good enough or?
That maybe. So there is a line that is still shown there. Wish I had a video that I could point to.
The red line.
Yeah. So there is an, an access, there is area up there. The one little area that we do have some curb is to the east of that. Yeah, right. It, it actually goes to the center, so it would go to the center of that drive aisle. We do have some snow storage shown there, which we can remove, and we can definitely work with the butter to see if we can accommodate that and make sure that that remains clear. We would end up losing, I think, one or two parking spaces at the end there, which we still had. We could find a, a spot for one parking space.
Quick question for you.
Yes, yeah.
There's also a cross-access easement right here. Is this what you had in mind as something that was released?
So I'm not sure the full extent. There was multiple easements and cross-easements through there, so I've got to review this release of easements. So I've got to review this release of easements here. Yeah.
Mr. Eckler, is this the one that you're talking about right here?
The one right at the top there?
Okay.
Okay.
Yes, Chris Eckler, with some of his properties were involved in that also. He's the one that released his properties and his easements, but my
I see.
My easement is still in my deed of Lot 30.
Okay.
My, my easement's never released. My attorneys all sent them a letter in April 24.
Okay.
We will definitely need to review that. Because 2019 is when this whole thing started.
You, you, you need to come up to the microphone. We, we need it for the, for the record.
That's okay.
You, you both can be in.
No, it's, it's okay. No, no one's gonna start a fight. If, if, sir, if you could just, if you wouldn't mind repeating yourself, just the point he made. There was a correspondence from your attorney in the prior statement you made that your property had not.
Daniel Gagnon, the butter, Lot 30. The easements, there were multiple easements on that north end of the property going from Union Street across, that's the one you're running the line across. There is three properties, I think, that were involved in the end of it, and Chris Eckler was in the others. His properties were in those easements. He's the one that released his easements, his part of the easements. My easement is still in, in my deed of my lot. Those were never, that was never released. That one easement, not, the other one in the middle, I don't know anything about that. That was probably Chris's also.
Thank you for reiterating that point. Appreciate it, so.
Like I said, my attorney, Jeff Zoll, sent them a letter back in April of 24 when they opened the lot up for parking, and they were parking in the easement, and then they put a Jersey barrier up on the end, blocking access to Union Street, which is the access that I use. So I requested that, I ran into Joseph Tebow, who I don't know if he's just a property manager or, or part of the company that's doing this. He called me with an issue of the snow out front. I took care of that, but I asked him about the barrier, and he said, whenever you need it open, we'll move it. Said, okay. That we can do it in the spring when the snow's gone.
Questions from the board? Scott, please.
I guess it's more for planning, I mean. Have you guys had a chance to review the impact of these easements on the, or is this kind of new? Because I see how like, you know, some of these even easements are labeled with multiple lot, like references, meaning there could have been multiple deeds that had them for different, different lots.
Yeah, I'm, I'm actually pulling up the deed reference in the plan right now.
Yeah, and cross-access seems challenging because it looks like it's essentially connecting to a street, you know?
There used to be an old neighbor street.
Yeah, so.
Do you believe Brian, Mr. Brian Tebow, the property owner?
Yeah, just stand at the mic.
Yeah, the microphone. Oh, sorry. Mr. Brian Tebow is here. He is the, the property owner. He may be able to shed some light on that. We do have some information of the release of the easements, and we're not, his office may have additional. We did not receive the, the letter, but we'll definitely make sure that we review that as well.
But maybe correct me if I'm wrong. You, you know, if you couldn't, you know, you can't clear that area of the easement and have the plan be functional right now. Because you'd kind of lose the back, you'd lose that pathway, right?
There's still access that can get out, so there's, it's, we're not completely cutting the access off. So the, the, the premise of the old, those old access easements was there was an old paper street that ran through there that had been discontinued, and that's what those access easements were for. Presumably the, the easement area could be redefined to the travel ways through there, other than the one that's right up that hugs the, the top property line, the 12-foot for Lot 30. But we will definitely need to, to look at that. Our understanding is that the vast majority of those easements had been abolished.
Yeah, and it looks like to me there's, there's a 12 and an 18, and then there's that sort of big one.
There's multiples in there, yeah.
So there's like three of them sort of stacked. And then there's, looks like there's also like, like a, sort of a trapezoidal parking area one or something in the middle there too. So it, it looks, looks like there's four or five up in that corner, so. On the existing plan.
Yeah.
Correct.
I, I, I think in, in all honesty, I realize we, we haven't closed the public hearing yet, but I think we're not gonna adjudicate an easement, potential easement dispute at, at, at this juncture, regardless of how well-intentioned it is. I, I think there, there is some issues that need to be resolved personally before the board is able to take formal action on this. Where we'll have to deliberate on the matter at hand, but I think we've heard enough this evening to, at least in my mind, I won't speak for other members of the board, it seems like there's a few details that do need to be addressed prior to the board taking formal action on the application. So if neither, do either of you gentlemen have anything else to add at this point? Then I think at this point, I'm gonna close the public hearing, but thank you both for your testimony this evening. I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, so we'll enter into our deliberation. I guess to reiterate my personal opinion, I'd be open to a motion for a continuance. I, I think there's some potential restrictions on that rear access towards Bridge Street. It, it may not be insurmountable, but I think as presented, there's enough questions this evening where we would be ill-advised to make an affirmative up or down vote. That's, that's my thought, obviously. I'd like to hear from members of the board. Alderman, please.
Thank you.
Sorry, you get blocked.
That's okay. He's very, very, I have to be grown back like this and so on. I, I, I'm glad that you said that because I, I wasn't sure whether or not this was pertinent and allowed because I didn't know how easements would work, but I did not feel comfortable even with a single easement not having been completely cleared, and after you had spoken to Mr. Durfee, and he said that there were number, as well as Mr. Leclair having spoken about a number of, of easements sitting there. I feel like it's, it's, and, and even the gentleman who had spoken had said, and as he shuffled his papers and said, we have a lot of easements here and seemed to be unsure. I would really like to know that they'd all been cleared, or at least that everything had, was steady and we knew exactly what was happening before we made any decisions. It looks like a wonderful plan. It looks like many of these things, but I also look at all the comments and so on, and that came through on the 19th, and I'm not sure that they've all been addressed. I don't think that the, that they've had the chance to address them all either, so. I think a continuance, I'm not sure how we go about doing that. I still feel like a newbie on this board sometimes, but I think that that would be the best thing.
Thank you, Alderman. Please.
Yeah, I mean, I think, not necessarily coming to a different result, but I guess a slightly different perspective, which is, I don't think it's this board's job to sort of figure out the enforcement of private easements. Having said that, to the extent that the applicant determines they need to modify the plan, potentially in a meaningful way, that is relevant to our review. So with that in mind, I think it's advisable for us to give the applicant that opportunity rather than, you know, because the other, excuse me, the other alternative is we could say, basically, we're gonna leave this to a post-approval revision process. But to the extent, again, that the changes to the plan could be more meaningful to address this issue, I think it's, we're probably better off giving the applicant that opportunity and back and handling that at this level.
Yeah, and then just to piggyback on that thought, this is a little different than what we normally see. This isn't like minor, necessarily minor plan revision things or, or things of that. What, when, you know, you're, you're talking basically easement access rights and effectively sort of ownership components related to the overall plan. I, I certainly would feel more comfortable allowing the applicant to investigate things a little bit further, talk to his neighbors if necessary, and try to resolve the matter before the board taking a formal action. But certainly willing to take other thoughts. Scott, please.
Yeah, I'm in agreement with what you guys are saying. I think I'd also ask staff that, you know, if this does get continued and comes back, any kind of, if you can add any additional comments in the staff report about the, you know, if any of these easements are remaining, what are the requirements of the, you know, because cross-access versus parking, I mean, they got different, different requirements on them in terms of what can and can't be done on the, on and above, right? So it'd be good to give us some guidance on that.
Certainly.
Yeah?
Yep. I will just say, before a motion to continue is made, to do that, we actually do need the applicant's consent. We cannot unilaterally just continue an application.
Is, Sam, is that due to a, is there a timestamp on this, or is there some other reason?
Yes, there's been changes in statute, and we're bound to act on applications within a given timeframe. And if we don't, then it's deemed approved unless continued with the consent of the applicant. However, if the applicant does not give his consent, we either have to approve or deny.
Understood on the ramifications.
So reopen the, the public hearing?
Certainly. Was there a motion to reopen the public hearing? Mr. Barley, second, by Mr. Green. All those in favor?
Aye.
Floor is yours.
I'm gonna turn it over to Sam for one minute. When's the next meeting, Sam?
Uh, sure, the, the next meeting is the April, sorry, March 6th meeting.
Okay. We, I believe we would be able to get our information in order and at least have a resolution or something to provide to the board by the March 6th meeting.
Is, just to, for the record, does that mean you are consenting to a continuance until the March 6th meeting?
Yes, we are consenting to a continuance till March 6th.
Thank you.
Thank you.
That should give us enough time to sort of hammer that out, have some additional discussions with the butter, and come to a resolution on that.
Thank you.
Thank you for being amenable to that. I, I think that's a better solution. I realize you're working under a time constraint, and I, I, we do understand that, but I, I think, I think you heard the board.
No, it's understandable, so. And we definitely don't want to make enemies of the neighbors as well.
We appreciate it, but I, I think overall, again, you heard the comments on the plan in general. I think that there's, I think there's some degree of comfort with, with what's being proposed, but obviously there's a couple of entanglements there that just need to be investigated.
Understood.
All right, understood. Well, thank you. Thank you for coming back up. I think at this time, again, I'll, I'll close the public hearing, go back into our public meeting. You're all set for now, Paul, so thanks again.
All right, thank you.
All right. Well, I think at this point, with all the facts established procedurally, is any member of the board willing to make a motion? Mr. Barley?
Yes, Mr. Barley, or Mr. Chair, I would make a motion as to new business site planning case number 824-0238. Having received the consent of the applicant, that we continue the hearing on this matter until the March 6th, 2025 meeting.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Barley. Is there a second? Second, Mr. Green. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item on the agenda, review of tentative agenda to determine developments of regional impact. Has any member of the board had an opportunity to review the project listed on the tech review meeting from February 18th and is willing to make a motion on potential projects of regional impact? Oh, Mr. Leclair?
Sure, I've reviewed the tentative agenda, and I'd like to make a motion that there are no projects of regional impact.
Thank you. Motion by Mr. Leclair. Is there a second? Second by Mr. Barley. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Motion passes. Next item on the agenda. I believe Sam's gonna provide a brief overview regarding the inclusionary zoning standards. All right, Sam, the floor is yours whenever you're ready.
Certainly, so this board has actually seen these about a year and a half ago. We do need to basically promulgate standards associated with the inclusionary zoning around how these units are, like the finish levels, and to ensure that there's an equity between, you know, market rate and the affordable units to a reasonable degree. These standards do include standards as to how that would be achieved. They have not changed since the last time we brought them before you. We basically polled them, and, and I will state that these are hinging on basically a single project right now. You may be, you may recall the Doucet project, that fairly large detached, single-family home subdivision, 80 some odd units, some of which were deemed affordable. They utilize the inclusionary zoning. There is a density maximum in the district. They use the IZ to get that density bonus. And so, back to that conversation we, we had earlier. And they are under construction, and because that, they are actually asking us like, so hey, we know these standards exist, but they're not formally adopted. What's the status? And they have these, so they're kind of leaning on them as guidance as they do go through the construction, but we do need to formally adopt them. So that's what you have before you tonight. We do not have to take a vote on them this evening. This is more of a opportunity just to remind you of, of what these are, what we have them, kind of put them on your radar, give you some time to peruse them if you so choose. Maybe come back with some comments for, for our next meeting. And we'll certainly be taking a look at that with a, with a fresh eye again as well. But just wanted to kind of bring them back to everyone's attention.
Thank, thank you, Sam. Just, just a quick question procedurally. Does, is this board gonna have to, at some point, make an affirmative action? Or is this gonna come back potentially as an aldermanic resolution, or just try to?
So it would not be an aldermanic resolution. Actually, the planning board was given, you know, strict authority to promulgate these standards on their own accord. So all's in our court.
Do you, do you foresee, how do you foresee the timeline playing out on?
The approval of these, or? Well, I think for, I guess, if we come back next meeting and there are substantive questions, concerns, you know, we, there's some edits that we need to do, I don't think that we should try and force an adoption when they're clearly not ready. But that said, if we're, if we're there and we think that they're, they're satisfactory, they'll achieve what we tried to. That's great. I will also say, given we are writing a new code, these will kind of serve as the baseline for standards that are adopted or re-adopted in the future, though maybe more reflective of that code, particularly because we are looking at different tiers of affordability in the new code, which this does not quite contemplate. So consider it a bit of a stopgap measure, really applicable to only one project right now, but one that we still have to make simply because one project is relying on it.
Should I, actually, I say we'll, we'll put one. Sam, is there any part in this process where we're gonna have to accept public testimony? Sam, is there any part in this process where we're going to have to accept public testimony or is this just totally convened within the planning board?
That's actually a really good question. I'm, I'm not sure of the answer on that. I think that we, we could open it up to a public hearing, but I will, I will do some research and get back to you on whether or not we actually have a requirement to do so. It would surprise me if we do, but I would like to be able to give you the answer definitively.
Certainly, thank you, ultimately. Sorry to cut you off.
That was part of, part of one of my questions, whether or not we were going to be taking any public input into, into this was going to be part of it. The other question that I have was, in, in looking in this and I, and I see that there's things like it doesn't have to meet 100% of what the affordable, the market, the affordable doesn't have to meet 100% of the same requirement of the market rate type of thing. And, and as I'm reading that, I understand that it necessarily doesn't have to meet the same exact size of a market rate, but does, does it have to meet like the same type of counters or?
Right.
So it doesn't have to meet even the same standard of, if, if I, if I read that rate, so it doesn't have to have like the, like the counters?
Interior standards.
Right, so the interior standards and things like that. Are you looking for us to give a, um, a percentage of, because it says it doesn't have to meet 100% of it, are we going to deem, it has to be like 90% or 80% of, is that what you're looking for us? Because it says it doesn't have to be 100% of.
Uh, could you?
Is the, is the, is the builder and so on looking for, for that? I mean, I'm looking at the, I'm looking at the tables that you, that you.
Would you mind giving me a page number just for?
Okay. I, I, I'm sorry. I know that you just, you had one there. I was just, hmm, if I can find it. Okay, so it says size in the bedroom count, the size of affordable units need not be 100% proportional to the market rate units. The total number of bedrooms in the affordable units versus all shall be equal to the affordable percentages, but what it says need not be 100% proportional to market rate units, total number of bedrooms, I, I understand that, but when you're talking about like square footage, does it have to meet a certain standard to the?
I think it's page four, the size of bedroom count, is that what you meant?
Yeah, so I'm just, I'm just using that one. And then when it talks about the interior standards, it says the design quality and materials of affordable unit interior shall generally be the same as market rate units, subject to discretion of the city's administrative officers. However, affordable units must include all basic amenities. But it doesn't talk about that if you use, that you can use marble for one and you can use.
Formica.
Formica for the other.
Yeah, no, that, that is the intention.
Yeah.
You know, if, if a developer does indeed choose to do marble countertops in the market rates, no, they do not have to do marble in the affordables simply because.
Right.
We recognize that would not work.
Right, it's not going to become affordable.
Exactly. The idea behind these is, the language in there around bedrooms, we want those to be equal. There is, you know, they don't have to be exactly the same size. We recognize that, you know, and, and even I think this board's articulated in the past, you know, when we do a large subdivision, we don't want all of exactly the same house, you know, just kind of cookie cutter, you know? So there are going to be architectural differences, but we also don't want, you know, you have a large subdivision, you have four different models of houses, you know, the market rates are all models one through three, but then all of the affordables are model four and model four is a slightly lesser size. Those sorts of things are, we're, we're hoping that we've, we've adequately captured within here where there is that, you know, dispersment of the affordables through either different models of, of house or as long as the, the bedroom count is captured and is equal and proportional, that's what we, we really want to see because, you know, that's where you get down to, that's where people live and reside.
But we're not setting size of bedrooms or, or room size right here, just the number of the rooms. They can determine size. Okay, that's fine, thank you.
Questions, Mr. Barley, please.
Yeah, Sam, I guess a question and a comment, and this really all relates to the, the maximum allowable sale price. So this is on page three, I guess.
Yeah.
And I just want to make sure that, that I understand sort of like steps, process, how this is supposed to work. So I think there's one simple calculation where it's just the, you know, 33% for ownership of the applicable income level. And then there's a sort of a second calculation that says, okay, now we have to determine what, how, how we arrive at the price considering things like, you know, the interest rate and the 5% down payment. Is that, is that basically conceptually right when you, then you're then sort of, you're matching the two of those?
Yes, yes, that is the concept.
Okay. Cause I, I, I think, like reading the, the guidelines and the ordinance together, I was able to sort of fit those two pieces together, but I found it maybe, and I'm just sort of providing this like in the interim, but I, I found it diff, I was trying to think about this from the perspective of a developer who's saying like, I want to do a hypothetical calculation to determine, you know, what the affordable price would be. And I was struggling a little bit to figure out what that, how you would, you know, look at this and do that calculation. I, I know that's not tremendously clear what I'm saying, but I, I have, maybe I can just provide comments in advance of the next time we consider it.
Yeah.
But I just wanted to flag that as an issue and also make sure I was understanding correctly how, how it's supposed to work.
Yeah. I, I welcome those comments because it is not exactly super clear, but I think it gets to the convoluted nature of trying to be equitable as much as possible while achieving affordability, but doing so in a way where there really are guardrails up so that, you know, this potential affordable buyer, you know, is protected and we have the standards in place to ensure that, you know, the, what we are, what the vision is actually manifest through these regulations.
All right, I guess, Sam, building on Adam's question. I'm not trying to overly complicate this. Is, is there like an online tool or a calculator that's, that's contemplated as part of this where you could put in some of those hypotheticals? I think, because it may come to that, because I, I have to imagine a potential builder, developers, it's not going to treat this lightly. Obviously, they're going to want to.
Certainly.
The, the answer, I, I think shouldn't just have to be, well, to find out what it really is, you'll have to call Sam Durfee in planning and, and, which I'm sure you would, you would treat them very well, but just kind of back in the envelope, I think folks would have a little better understanding of at least, you know, hypothetically what the cost may bear out to be.
I, I'd even go as far to say, you know, um, any developer worth their salt and being successful probably has an Excel sheet, you know, their basic pro forma and they can tweak that to mirror this, probably to a far greater level of efficacy than I could. We're basically providing the guidance and the standards. They have to figure it out, how it plays into their development plans and make it pencil for them. And, and I will also just reiterate, this is a stopgap measure. This is going to get further tweaked with the new code. And I think, I'm hopeful that this Dusette project is actually going to teach us a lot about this. And we've already been in contact with a developer on a number of items around inclusionary zoning and we are getting really good feedback and, you know, we understand that this isn't perfect, you know, we're really going out on a limb to try and, and do something new. And, and I think there are some growing pains associated with it, but because we are also going to be developing a new code, great opportunity to institute some positive changes around that to make this better, not only for the people buying, renting and living there, but also the people building it and so that actually results in more affordable units.
I'd like to add on top of that with respect to the builder, yeah, any builder would want to, I feel like, reach out to the planning department, get their feedback and show that they want to get the incentive and, you know, be on the good side of the town, whatever that means, but, um, yeah, I agree with that sentiment.
Thank you.
That, yeah, the next project that we're, that we're working on where it's going to be a multi-tier, where they keep bumping up until they're basically out.
Oh, no, it actually goes in the opposite direction.
Or?
Like where, where our current IZ, if you're referring to my earlier statement about having multiple tiers of affordability?
Right, so if the, the, right now, we're at.
80.
We're at 80. So we're going to be able to do the 80 and 60, right?
And possibly 30.
And then possibly 30.
And the incentive gets stronger.
Okay.
The deeper the affordability.
The deeper that the affordability.
And that's why we're working with RKG to kind of model different scenarios to understand, you know, how many, what is the bonus to be able to internally subsidize an affordable unit at a given tier and make sure that, that bonus is, is comparable to, you know, the, the cost that they're eating on providing that affordable unit so that it actually balances out and that does become a real incentive rather than a barrier.
May I?
Oh, keep, keep going.
Thank you. But, but we're not going to have a concern that we would build the home that it would become so, as I pointed, the, the marble to the formica, that we would have a plywood countertop. Do you see what I'm saying?
Right.
We're not going to build it to the point where we get down to, to something to that nature, correct?
Right, right. And I think, you know, establishing very clear minimum standards as part of that, that fine tuning that will occur.
Okay, because I don't want to get down to a 30% and they have to live on a table.
And I think you'd be, you'd be getting into, you know, we're building code standards at that point, you know, there is a standard of living established in those and I mean, that's, I think we're going to.
And I don't want a 30% of this be the case.
Right.
Okay, thank you.
Other members of the board? Appreciate, appreciate the feedback.
I have one question.
Oh, secondly.
Um, do, do you have any data as to how many affordable units are in, currently in Nashua and the number of bedrooms they have?
Yes, we do have that data. It's not off the top of my head, but I.
Well, I didn't expect, Sam.
Can kind of represent basically more of a recollection of some recent projects. And, you know, when you think about, you know, the Bronstein Apartments, Monahan, the recently approved made-out homes while not built, you know, these are also, these projects are redevelopments where there's a net increase, both of those are netting an increase north of 100 affordable units. And those being LITC, low income of, uh, low income housing tax credit projects, the level of affordability is much deeper, I mean, all the way down to, to 30%. And, you know, there's, that's where we're really seeing a lot of the growth in the affordable housing unit count. But those projects, the, the, the LITC program is incredibly competitive because it is millions of dollars that go into a project to be able to provide this, this level of affordability. So that's why, not to plug the code again, but we really want to be able to provide other avenues to achieve affordability, really through just standard market support. But those numbers really have to be fine tuned and, and updated, you know, based on changes in construction costs and interest rates. I mean, it has to be a living document and I think that, that's the other part of the development of standards is, you know, we will probably here at this board have an annual review of construction standards in, in the market, basically, and, you know, we would have to probably tweak those numbers accordingly.
One more question. Um, and so potentially, and I probably should save this for our next meeting, but could there potentially be any flexibility for the board to work with an applicant? Like if they needed to build two bedrooms, because that's what they're building throughout, you know, the property, you know, mostly throughout the property, could there be any opportunity to allow them to build two one bedrooms, let's say, for potentially a, a single person that would need an affordable unit? And I'm, I'm just asking that because I used to work in the tax credit area and I, I always found that one bedrooms just weren't very common out there. So that segment of folks looking for that type of housing situation didn't have as many opportunities.
Certainly, yeah, I think that there is that level of flexibility that we, we are contemplating in the code. Yeah, and even when we look at, you know, some of the apartment, the, the large multifamily buildings that we've been seeing, you know, the, the mix of units is actually trending smaller generally, a lot of studios in one bedrooms and then two bedrooms actually kind of seem to be the exception.
Okay.
But on some of the LITC projects, that's where you actually, we've seen units that go up to five bedrooms. But because there's a need, you know, it's very unusual to see high bedroom count units being developed unless there's subsidy behind it because of, you know, the cost of building that unit, it's, it's very difficult for the market to naturally meet that need without some sort of assistance.
Thank you.
Ultimately.
I know Bronstein has at least one, not more, five bedroom.
That they do.
Neighbor Works, do they have a couple of one bedrooms?
I think they're mostly one bedrooms.
I think they have, the, the one that's on Main Street that got built, I think they have a couple of one bedroom. They have smaller units there, don't they?
Yeah.
Because they are basically the no parking kind of, uh, type of units, so they, they were built. But they have market rate as well, don't they?
I think.
In order, do they all have affordable?
Very few, it's primarily a.
Primarily affordable with a couple of sprinkling, just so they could make the numbers work? If I remember when they came in front of us.
Yeah.
But, um, thank you.
Certainly. Other members of the board? Appreciate your, your thoughts, comments. Obviously, Sam's interested in hearing if you have more, so don't, don't be shy. But I think we don't have anything else tonight, so. I was wanting to make them up. Ms. Harper, please.
Yes, Mr. Chair, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
Is there a second? Second by Mr. Green, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Motion passes, we are adjourned at 8:07.